Call is made in order. Tonight, we're going to be led in the pledge by Chairman Blair.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Blair.
Sir, Chairman.
All right. I'd like to welcome everybody to this special call of the policy meeting. I believe this is the second one for the year now. I think we've got eight items on here, so Ms. McLeod, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Okay, and we'll get started with number one, policy 5.302, see please. And as you can see on the copies that I've provided you, what we had in the policy currently for the definition of immediate family members for bereavement leave versus what we had in the policy for immediate family member for sick leave was not consistent. And so, I don't know if it was an oversight or what happened, but anyway, it needed to be, we felt like it needed to be consistent, so that was one of the things that we wanted to try to take care of during this meeting.
So what, what did you do?
We just changed the definition down at the bottom where I have it starred. We changed the definition of immediate family member to include, it's the same as it is in the previous, second paragraph above that. It had previously only included spouse, parents, children, and siblings. So this expands the definition for what you'd be taking a bereavement leave day for.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Blair, second by Mr. Tackett. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion passed. Number two.
Number two is 4.602 GPA class rank. And you see on the copy that I've provided you, that first start, line 18, this, this line previously, or in the current policy, always said valedictorian. We have added salutatorian criteria. And then you can follow down to number three, where the asterisk is, there's a requirement that the valedictorian, salutatorian requirements must be completed by the end of the seventh semester, beginning in the 2014-2015 school year. That had not been in the policy previously. And then the second page, both of those sections have been added to the revised policy.
Anybody got any questions?
I'd...
Mr. Tackett.
I guess I'm surprised that the word salutatorian is still being used. I don't know that we've used salutatorian. What, who do we give that to?
Mr. Tackett? The next highest GPA from 4.0. Before, we have, we have to have that by state law, they changed those regulations last year, so it had never been in the policy, so we had to add that word into the policy.
So the fact that we have high schools with 14, or 15, or 17, or 22 valedictorians, does that mean we still have a salutatorian?
Yes, sir, we do.
So, the notch below 4.0 becomes the salutatorian?
Yeah.
Okay.
The 3.99, we'll take it out to the decimal point that it takes to find that single salutatorian. We will have a single salutatorian unless we ended up with a 3.99999, just some kind of public crazy digit before it.
Okay.
And we haven't had that happen before, but the special place required for us to do that.
Almost more special would be the salutatorian.
But, there was this discussion on lifting that number, I suppose, but that really would drive down the academics in our school. At some point, in your probably sophomore year, you'll realize that you're not going to beat that 4.0, or you won't be equal to those others. And assumptions won't take those difficult classes, have it the way we currently have it, we've set it up, drives a higher academic participation.
I'm not against it, I'm just surprised for you.
All right, anybody? Move to approve. Motion by Mr. Young.
Second.
Second by Ms. Blankenship. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed to it? Motion passed. Number three.
Number three is 6.304, this is our bullying policy and harassment policy. I've given you two. The first copy in your packet is our current policy. The second copy is the recommended TSBA adoption that includes the new requirements under the state law that, for cyberbullying and hazing. The first asterisk also has the new reporting requirement that's included in state law. They really have just reworked this policy and added all the new components. There's also two on the second, the last page. There's a requirement for reporting now that if there is physical harm, or the threat of physical harm to a student or students property, then the bullying report should be reported to the director of schools and to the chair of the board of education. And then the second one is the requirement that we submit an annual report regarding bullying cases in the district. We've already implemented all of those things, but have not adopted entirely policy, including all of them.
So it's new, and basically you've added cyberbullying?
It's added, there are components of cyberbullying that are currently in our discipline procedures already. We have not included it in the bullying policy. And we also didn't have a good definition of hazing in our current policy. So those are two things I think are assets to the new norm, with the addition of all the required language as well.
Anybody having comments, questions?
I have a question on the definition of causing emotional distress to students. Are students, what verbal abuse, name calling, fit into that category that would make a student uncomfortable about coming to school?
It could. I mean, as long as all of the components of that definition are met, that verbal comment certainly could be bullying. The basis for the definition is that it substantially interferes with a student's educational benefits, opportunities, or performance. So you look at all the circumstances to make sure that the definition for bullying was met, but certainly verbal could be one of the components.
Okay, procedure for addressing bullying situation, I can't really hit that very good, start with the immediate teacher that wanted to occur, with the principal first, what's the proper decision?
Well, it certainly could have, it was reported to initially. And that could be a classroom teacher, and then they would make the report to the administrator. And then the investigation would be conducted.
If that teacher failed to react or handle the situation, would it appropriately go to the principal?
Sure.
Do the next steps?
Yes.
And of what part would the situation be brought to the lawyer limit if it's not satisfied at the principal level?
Yes.
I have read fast enough, of course, I got to the situation, which I'll put away.
We have, Ms. McLeod and Ms. Barnes are complaint managers, and so they go out and do for the investigation, interview people, that sort of thing, and then make a report back on it. So we have a process to do that. The change in the legislature was, this last year, that asset counts be sent in. So we just have a statutory change in it that school districts had to list how many they had, that sort of thing, and then make that report back. That was the change.
Anybody else?
Someone?
Motion by Mr. Blair.
Second.
Just second by Mr. Nipper. Any further discussion on it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Number four.
Number four is policy 3.206, community use of facilities. I've put this on the agenda for you just to consider, there have been some recommendations by our insurance department that the, the limit, the insurance limit that we require, which is on page two, under number 12, $2 million liability policy, or you can consider a $1 million policy that we at least talk about raising those limits, just because the value of the buildings at this point, obviously are more than $1 million or $2 million dollars. And there's some other systems around the country are increasing their limits as well. So I just thought it was a good time for you to have some discussion about what you think we need to do that.
I can tell you, adding limits on top of, if Nissan or Bridgestone wants to use up facilities, I mean, they've got layer, a layer of access coverage, but when you start asking dance studios, and sometimes even churches, to start adding all these layers of access coverage, it gets quite expensive. And I'm afraid that, that we're going to be shutting out our community, which is contrary to what we've been trying to do in the past, is bring people in to utilize these facilities that have been, been paid for by tax dollars. So I, I would hate for us to go that direction. I'm trying to think of some situation where an organization, you know, could probably, not possibly, but probably cause a million dollars' worth of damage. I mean, yes, they could start a fire, but, I mean, we've been, we've been blessed, I hate to, hate to jinx this, but I just hate to see us increase that financial burden on, on these entities that are utilizing our facilities. We're already requiring a million, so it can be problematic with the expense. And I sail, but I don't want to hold them hostage, so.
I guess my question, Ms. McLeod, have you heard of anything, any cases?
No.
On this, I just brought to your attention. Okay.
I would think $1 million is sufficient for what, for what's going on in our schools now.
Okay.
So I would be cut off with the $1 million still as a limit. I mean, maybe something you have to look at in the future, you know, years down the road, but I think today, $1 million is still sufficient, insurance that puts schools in, for these outside groups. It's low risk, it can cause anything more than $1 million damage.
So, I guess on this, we don't have to take any action. Is that correct? Okay. Number five.
Okay, number five is the policy that Mr. Clardy spoke to you about last week at the board meeting, on energy conservation. And I provided me the copy with a copy of this last week, so you have a chance to review it. Mr. Clardy is here, if you have any questions. We did make one minor change today on the second page, under energy savings copulation. The second sentence there had previously said 50% of the energy savings recognized, and we've changed that to a percentage.
I think what we ought to do, Ms. McLeod, for people that aren't on the board, have Mr. Clardy just address this before we go any further on it. If you don't mind, Mr. Clardy.
Thank you, Mr. McLeod. I'm going to give you a little synopsis of what we've done, where we want to go with this, and then I'll explain the policy to you. We've made major strides in energy conservation over the past several years by putting in energy-efficient lighting, light sensors, water-conserving restroom fixtures. We've used recirculated water on, for irrigation. We've put in an efficient heating system. We've put in thermal windows. We use geothermal heating and cooling in our new school. We have dropped our building envelope down and made smaller volumes there. And we've also installed some upgraded and newer digital energy management systems on our heating and cooling. Right now, on the board that I serve on for the governor, it's Energy Efficiency School Initiative Board. And there, of course, that started out with $90 million, and we've gotten some of that originally to use on the new fixtures. And we're managing that money. We had a little bit available, so we made like $4 per student available to all the counties in Tennessee out of this money, and it's coming back in. So we got about $168,000 of that. And to get that grant, you have to have an energy policy in effect, and this money has to be used for energy management and energy education. This is the next logical step in our process of conserving energy. We've got a lot of digital telemetry management systems in, but we kind of deal with it on a hit and miss basis, where we set some things. We've had an engineering company to look at us, to show us where we had some problems. So we'd like to get several of our schools on that energy management system, and this is kind of a step towards that. So, basically, the policy addresses educating and managing the energy sector. And it makes everyone an assistant stakeholder on conserving energy and trying to help us save money. And there's always a problem, and I hear this on the Energy Efficiency School Initiative Board all the time, that the savings that are realized never go back into the system in most cases. So I wanted to put that in policy, so it would be addressed that at least part of the savings would go back into the system to try to perpetuate saving more money. And I hope that through the process also, right now, the Energy Efficient School Initiative is getting about $400,000, $450,000 of return on the money right now. It's coming back in on loan payments and things that we've let out all over the state of Tennessee. So we hope to make some of that available at a very small interest, maybe 1% or something, to loan to the county in Tennessee as that comes back around. So we hope that it's possible that maybe we can get some of that money if we can figure out what's going on. Also, we're looking at some energy conservation companies and doing a kind of a cost analysis against those. And we hope to bring someone, or maybe a couple of companies in here for you to listen to at some point, and help us see if we either need to hire someone as an energy manager, as a regular employee, or maybe outsource it to an energy management company. So, with that, all those things said, I'm sorry I took too long, but just, if you have any more questions, I'll be glad to answer them for you.
So basically, this is our step in, as far as securing the grant, having a policy.
And future grants also.
We're going to look at some companies, as Mr. Clardy said. What you run into sometimes is the way they try to write in their contract, whatever you say, I mean, your budget doesn't go up, but they get most of it, so, I mean, do we want to hire our own, do we want to do it? We just need the information so you can make a good decision when that comes. We'll work on that this spring, see if we can, see which is the best way for Rutherford County to go. We've done so much more than other systems already, you know, with your light savings and your geothermal, and people come and look at us. You had some last week that was coming, looking at us, I know.
Right. We're the poster children for them, right?
Has anybody else did the lighting like this?
There's several school districts that have done lighting, but some of the other things, the sensors and the water and those things, they haven't done. Also, they haven't done geothermal and those types of things. They've stuck with a conventional type system.
Mr. Blair?
As far as the solar, I know Hawkins County has, in that, and I believe their director or assistant superintendent is huge on solar. Are there any other counties that have made that kind of commitment?
Most of the commitment to solar is very expensive upfront. And you may recall this, Mr. Blair, that a couple of times in the past, I've gone up to Kentucky to look at some solar projects, and the only way, in my opinion, is to collect solar energy and put it back in the power grid and get paid for that, because it just costs too much to store it. And that initial investment of those massive solar panels is pretty expensive, and it takes a while to get the money back. Plus, TBA has cut back on some incentives that they've had. What I would actually, and we've studied this quite a bit, I've kind of been looking to maybe try to figure out on one of our new schools, how to go to LED lighting and maybe with solar and batteries on poles to try to, that's a massive chunk of money and energy, is the lighting, get parking lot lighting every night in our school. So, you know, we're constantly looking at solar and different alternatives to try to save money. And when it becomes, the payback gets so we can stand it, we try to move in that direction.
Thank you, Mr. Clardy. Anybody else?
I'm going to make all the motions tonight.
You tired of making motions? We've got a policy out here, so.
I'll make the motion approved.
Mr. Young made a motion. We got a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Nipper, second.
I'm not going to second all of them tonight.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Number six, Ms. McLeod.
Number six is a proposed policy on social media. And likewise, we did one at Central Valley last week, so you have a chance to review it. Mr. Evans and Mr. Odom have been working on this policy for some time, so they're both here, obviously, to answer questions if you have a question. We did take, I want to tell you, we, we got TSBA's policy, we've got some other systems' policies, and sort of compared them, and looked down toward what we thought was relevant for our system, and made appropriate changes. So we have reviewed several other policies, and of course, we're coming up with this one.
I guess we do, it's okay, you, Mr. Odom, you and Mr. Evans want to go over this?
Can. Mr. Evans, why don't you step up and talk a little bit more about it, because we have pulled from several other districts and all in developing this.
Well, we all know that social media is becoming more and more popular, Facebook, Twitter, YouTube, Pinterest, all these other outlets, LinkedIn, a lot of people using those things now. We obviously can't dictate what our employees do on their personal time unless it relates somehow to their professional duties. And this is, most of this is language from TSBA on how to have a policy in place to address those issues. We try to keep it as simple as possible and just very bulleted. We have an administrative procedure in place already that governs how schools can use social media as part of their communication plan. This is separate from that, though, this is personal use of social media.
Ms. Tackett?
What, what, what does the policy say right now about using the schools, districts, computers for such things as email like that? I mean, I guess I was under the impression that we already had a policy, I've noticed in number two down here, it says accessing personal social network sites on the district computers, prohibited doing it during the working hours, except legitimate. I was under the assumption we were at a point that they weren't even able to do that after hours.
I ain't doing that to answer that, but my understanding is in a nutshell, is that they're allowed to, they're allowed to use their computers for personal things if it's after or outside of working hours, on breaks and things like that. That's the nutshell version, I understood.
Anybody else?
Technology outruns us, all day and doing this, so you constantly look at it. I mean, we've opened up some, some of our snow announcing on Twitter now. I don't know how many followers you have now, but I know...
We launched two weeks ago, and we have 263 followers as of about five minutes ago. So it's going.
I think one of the unfortunate things is not a thing we can do about it, but just to kind of follow up on that, is, is there's so much of it out there that the kids want to use. It's really put the district and the teachers and administrators in such a bind, trying to prohibit that so they can keep up, keep the academic thing going. There's just more and more and more that they want to do that has to be done on their own time. I, I just...
A number of our schools are now using Twitter specifically for part of the communications. It's another layer of communications. Oakland High School and LeBurn High School are some of the most heavy, heaviest users. They do a really good job with it. So there's a lot of things that may be lower level recognitions you want to give students, you know, the things that don't necessarily deserve an entire news story or something like that, or it doesn't catch the interest in the media, but you can send out a little blurb on Twitter and really all your followers can see that, and you can just give the students a pat on the back for some of the smaller accomplishments. It's been really successful, and more and more schools are starting to use it. We have some guidelines in place now to kind of help keep that in check, but, you know, there's, there are some legitimate uses for it in the classroom and in the front office.
If you go look at the website for those two schools, you will actually see it, over on the side.
You say a lot of this is from TSBA?
Primarily, this is a combination of some things that Metro Nashville has in place, they've had a policy in place for years, and TSBA. Almost all of the bullet points at the bottom are from TSBA, just tweet delivered to fit our district.
Okay.
If you're looking for a motion, I'll make the motion that we approved it.
Second.
That sounds good, Mr. Tackett. Second by Mr. Blair.
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Number seven.
Number seven, you have several policies in your packet, all related to school organizations and clubs and extracurricular activities. Mr. Holliday asked that we put these policies on the agenda for discussion, so I did.
In the 2012 legislative session, the state of Tennessee passed what was then House Bill and Senate Bill 2548, or Senate Bill 2488. And in summary, it says that each educational system is required to notify parents by way of student handbooks or policy guidebooks of school-associated extracurricular activities, and gives parents the opportunity to prohibit their child for participate, from participating. In training that board members received at the state convention for school boards, it was explained to us that this is an opportunity for the school systems to draw a clear line between extracurricular activities and co-curricular activities. In definition, a co-curricular activity is a club or organization that has a direct attachment to a class that is offered in the normal curriculum. An extracurricular activity is an organization that, while it may involve students, it is not specifically tied to an academic endeavor. The attorney that made the presentation was from Sevier County, and he noted that the occasion to distinguish between these two organizations was important because it is extracurricular activities that are covered by the Freedom of Association Act or right that allows for student organizations to either exist or not exist. And that is where the courts have, in the past, drawn the line for a school system. We do not have the right to say which organizations can exist. If students are so inclined as to organize themselves, then their right to the freedom of association allows them to do so. All of this is my understanding, and if there's an attorney present or some authority on this who would, you know, call any of this into question, feel free to do so. I'll pause for just a moment and say, I'm bringing this up as a matter of discussion, seeking, you know, some feedback and, and some conversation on the topic. Because what I find as a board member is increasingly, there are members of the community that will come to the board, and they are, they find some element in school objectionable. And if what they find objectionable is, in fact, a student organization, then I'm limited as a board member to act on that because it is a response to an individual circumstance. Our only opportunity to take any kind of action is to do so preemptively and put in place ahead of time... and put in place ahead of time some type of review. As such, it seemed appropriate to me with the state legislature putting in place this new guideline for parents to be notified about student organizations, and an amendment that was added that gives the parents the opportunity to specifically dictate that their child is not to be involved in any student organization that they would list specifically. So, as a school system, we're going to take on the responsibility to identify these student organizations and the financial requirements that are attached to them, and then track parent feedback that says whether or not their student is allowed to participate in a specific student organization. With all of that going on, it seemed appropriate to me, and I would ask for this committee's feedback, that perhaps it's the right time for us to take a look at these student organization policies, and perhaps some adjustment is in order.
I guess I'll start it off. I guess we've got, we've got our lawyer here, so we'll let Mr. Reed address it. But I guess the question I would have, have we had any problems so far?
The only problems that we have had do not involve student organizations. And had we had a problem with student organizations, I believe the attorneys would, you know, would indicate to us that any attempt by the board to specifically react to that student organization would be viewed by the courts as a discriminatory act toward that individual student organization. So, if there is a problem, it's too late to put in place a policy that would allow us any type of review or recourse.
I don't know. I'm not a lawyer, so I guess Mr. Reed, Mr. Law.
Mr. Reed speaks. For any student to participate in an athletic team or a beta club, new Alpha Theta, fellowship Christian athletes, do they have, do they not have to have a permission slip from a, from a parent or legal guardian to participate?
Typically, they would. Usually, what we're doing there on this is compiling the King of State law. They have the name of the club and then something about that club. It was specific. I don't recall exactly what it had to be.
Well, what the, I mean, what the basis for the club is, would you find any financial obligations attached to it? And then the ability to opt out in a particular way?
I think that was covered by the statute.
Right, so parents are being notified now.
It will be more so this next year because it will be in student handbooks or some way to do it. There's literally almost hundreds of organizations when you really get from elementary up, 4H or anything else, you know.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mr. Reed.
Yeah, just, I think the legislation, the state legislation that has addressed this matter largely, I mean, takes care of the issue of making sure parents are notified of what organizations exist in schools. Schools, because the whole purpose of that is to notify parents of what organizations are out there and giving, it will give parents the opportunity to basically, basically say they don't want their child to participate with a particular activity or organization. So, the current state legislation largely addresses the issue as to making sure that parents are involved and have decision-making authority with respect to what organizations and groups their child's participating in at school. And before that, you know, those decisions really were made at the school level as far as what organizations exist around the school as a whole, and largely in the hands of the principal and assistant principals at the school. And if you have a student group that's going to want to start a new organization, they would have to get approval of that principal of that school before they started it. That allows the principal that's at that local school, who knows the students involved, knows the parents involved, to make a decision whether or not they think that organization will be something that will be worthwhile, beneficial to the school, or something that will be inappropriate for the school. So, previously, that decision had been made at the local school level. If you bring that matter to the board, make it a board issue, it becomes, from a litigation standpoint, it's more problematic because it's more likely to lead to litigation because people are going to feel like they had constitutional rights infringed on, potentially. And whether it's true or not, people are going to feel more aggrieved at the board level with respect to those type of issues than they do at the local school level. If the, if the concern is making sure parents are aware of what organizations their children are involved with at school, the legislation that's been adopted by the state takes care of that. List organizations, and if they're particular groups you don't want your child to be involved with, parents have a chance of indicating that at the beginning of school, you're opting out of that. That, I think that's the reason and thinking behind the legislation that came out of the state altogether. So, I think if there's a concern that parents are not involved in that process, I think as far as the litigation and diversity of legislation has been passed, and the new procedures are going to be implemented along those lines. Beyond that, I don't know what else anybody feels needs to really be done. But, you know, if you're concerned really that parents have a choice to decide yes or no whether or not their child is involved in a particular activity, they will have that choice at virtue of this new legislation that's in place.
If your concern is whether or not that organization exists, is the principal within their rights to deny that organization's existence?
Yeah, it's going to be a case, that's going to be a case-by-case situation. So, I guess at that point, you're deciding whether or not that decision should better be made at the local level by the principal who knows the parents and the students involved, or is that something that needs to be happened at a higher administrative level that's farther removed from the people involved in that particular organization? You know, a lot of organizations may, you know, may be very innocuous and not seem very problematic for a local principal, but if they can do it at the board level, people may not understand what's going on behind the knee. The children are trying to get the organization together, the parents trying to organize an event. I think just having the decision be made on a local level does give, I think, better decision-making authority at the local, just at that level than at a group level that's farther removed from the students and parents involved in the particular organization. So, but to go to answer your question, it's still a case-by-case situation. Principals may make correct decisions, they may make incorrect decisions in that regard. But it's a decision whether or not the board thinks those decisions should be made at a local level or at board level across the board, on a more arbitrary, system-wide basis. You know, a club that may be appropriate for one school may not be necessarily appropriate for a different school because you may have different levels of interest of kids in one school than another. So, that stuff varies from school to school.
I don't want to prolong the conversation, but there is concern in, that's been expressed to me by some parents, that there is a difference between the representation of the board members who reside in the community and are subject to the community's approval through election, as opposed to the administrators who do not necessarily reside in the community and may not be as accountable to the members of that community, particularly not in something like a club or organization decision, which can be a place that can set off strong emotions and fill the boardroom with community interest in the matter. And yet, at the same time, we as board members would certainly want to protect and support the administrators who do so many things well. And yet, you know, I truly believe that if the students have a charter and they have a, an employee faculty member who is willing to be their sponsor, I don't know that an administrator has a recourse to deny that student organization existence. And, you know, as such, a student organization could be approved in a, in what the community may find to be a mistake.
Well, in response to that, I would, I would think if you require everybody to come up here to the board and appeal to the board on every time they want to start an organization. I, my C. Panske is, is we're going to have a whole lot more problems that way than we are letting administrators do it. That's my personal opinion. I don't know, Mr. Tack, or?
I just think we're trying to solve the problems not there. I mean, I've stated that before and I'll restate it again. I think, I think it's the system we've got now has served us well. I don't know of any situations where the board has been approached by a group of parents because of a denial of a club by a principal. You should make the statement of what redress would they have if they got denied. Well, they're going to have the same redress we're going to have. The principal can accept or deny on the same basis as the board's going to do it. We all are going to follow the same set of guidelines and rules. I just think it's far better done at the local level. So far, when, when, when this becomes an issue, then I think we deal with it. But I, I don't know that it's an issue, don't see that it's an issue. And I think we're going to create more issues by bringing this policy to the board rather than letting the principals handle our school.
I think I understand what Aaron is talking about because I've had parents approach me about some situations where maybe an organization was formed and it didn't meet the criteria, but the principal let it be formed anyway, or let it exist. And I think some parents got upset about that. The board had no, no authority to do anything. I don't know where we should move with the policy, but I think something needs to be done at some level to ensure that all organizations that are formed are within the guidelines, whether they're, whether it's done by the principals or whether it's done by the board.
I have a question.
Mr. Law.
Trying to understand, if the principal makes a decision, he has to know if a group that disagrees one way or the other, would they, they would like to go past the principal? And that, and that would be the board, wouldn't it?
Sure.
Actually, it's great to schools.
I guess you're correct. I guess that's where I'm sort of disturbed on administrators. If they're not following through with what they, what they should be doing while nobody's contacting central office here.
And the reason why I say that, it seems like to me if a principal is there, but with the right notice, you know, he's going to look at certain different situations and see what's the best for the, for the student, the student. And if, if he, whatever decision he makes, I'm pretty sure that it would be based on one of the, the president policies and everything he has, and I don't see any reason, I don't see any reason for changing it, taking it from the local level. Because whether, whatever decision he makes, if that person is determined not to accept or agree with the decision, then if they are really, you know, sincere about what they want done, they, the next bill is to the next level. So, I'm trying to understand what, what would be the reason for changing it, like what it already is?
Please.
If they have that right to appeal anyway, whether they agree or disagree.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Tack.
Just cut the chase here. Somebody approaches my desk at Oakland with something that I'm not sure about, my next call is to the director of schools, my next call is to Ms. McLeod, my next call is to Mr., well, Ms. McLeod at the principal's level. Can we, can we not? Where's the, where's the pitfalls, so forth and so on? When you said if they, if they allow something or don't follow through on it and there's no redress, oh yeah, there's redress. He's sitting right there. If the principal doesn't do things according to the way the policy should be handled or steps out, outside some guidelines that he's not comfortable with and the board's not going to be comfortable with, there's redress. I think 45 principals understand that, recognize that if there's a question, they're smart enough to hit speed dial and talk to the next person up the line, can you support this or not? If you can't support this, tell me why, then that's the reason I go with it. But, you know, they're going to make 95% decision without having to worry with that kind of thing. But if it's something that becomes questionable, I think, I hope, would not, they got tougher decisions to make as to what clubs are going to be coming down the line. If they can't make that decision, they don't need to be making any others.
I would look at the change of command, you know, it's not to me to change a man, she's in blame on just about anything. You know, if you have them in the classroom versus over the classroom or the teacher. If you don't agree with that, you got the principal. If you don't agree with the principal, you got the director of school. Don't, director of school, the board. I mean, it seems like to me to change a commander, they have just about anything in particular situation. I mean, I, I get you. Does that, does that make sense?
You're correct. As most, everybody knows, we've got all classifications on this committee, so I hate to put Ms. Martin on the spot, but she's a principal elementary. I guess you, would you all rather have it on a local level versus us making decisions or?
Well, I think we already have the procedure set up with the policy that's set in place of how a club can be formed or a group can be formed. And then, you know, I know that we're not elected officials, but I think all 45 principals are very invested in their communities. And every decision that we make, we make that we think is going to be in the best interest of our students and our community that they live in.
If a principal receives an application for a student organization and there is a charter in place, a group of students, and a faculty sponsor, is there an option for the principal to say, no, that organization cannot exist? Hasn't it met all the criteria and therefore falls under the freedom of association that allows those students to come together? They've met all of the policies that we currently have in place, and the principal actually has no choice but to allow them to exist? Am I mistaken?
So, what's the board going to do differently? How do we have any more power to stop that than the principal would?
I don't, well, truly, we do not. And that's what I think we should explore. Is there, at this time, when the state legislature has drawn a clear distinction between co-curricular organizations and extracurricular organizations, is there reason for us to anticipate that somewhere in the future we may find a student organization that the community would find objectionable somewhere within our school system? And if that is the case, what recourse would we have? At present, we would have none, and I can accept that. But I did not want the occasion of this legislation coming into effect affecting what we do in our student handbooks to pass us by without stopping and considering the possibilities that it presents.
I'll give you my response, but I just want to let somebody else. My response can go back to Mr. Reed here. Whatever Mr. Reed advises, but I still think that you bring it up here at board level, you're going to have a whole lot more problems you got right now. And I don't see where you got any problems right now. That's, that's my opinion. Like I said, I don't know about the rest of the board or anybody on the committee, but...
I would say that, you know, you're going to have a greater risk of litigation by the board weighing in on those decisions than they do at the local school level. Figure you have a higher risk of litigation by the board weighing in of those decisions versus those decisions being made at the local school, school level by the principals and administrators involved in that local school. The set of constitutional principles are there regardless, but it's just more likely to lead to litigation if it's at the board level because it's going to have heightened attention, heightened media attention, and be a bigger issue to contend with. A lot of those issues can be addressed by local principals and assistant principals at the school level, and a combination may be able to be made for groups at that level that takes care of their immediate concerns, that makes them very happy or satisfied with their situation that cannot be done at the board level. So, that's, that's the dilemma you have.
As Mr. Wade describes... As Mr. Wade describes, if that objection comes to the board that some decision has been made or some organization has been formed and the community appeals to the board, would the board have any opportunity or standing to change that decision? Mr. Reed?
Uh, yes, it would.
Really?
Yes. So, it's going to be a case-by-case situation, depending on the facts. I mean, we're talking about generalities there, so I don't, we don't have specifics with respect to what you're saying. But there's an organization that's clearly inappropriate for the school. This board, as the administrator of the school system, exercises oversight over everything that goes on in the school. So, to the extent that something's deemed clearly to be inappropriate for the school, and this board determines it to be inappropriate for the school, it's within the discretion of this board to take action to not allow that within the school system.
If that's the case, then the discussion has been good, and I appreciate it. Thank you all for indulging me.
Thank you, Ms. Holliday. Ms. McLeod, number eight?
Uh, number eight, at the last call to meeting, you, there were several questions that board members had during our discussion on nurse screens for student athletes. Uh, one of them was, are schools tracking any data about how big a problem we have or how big it might be? And the answer to that is no, we haven't been tracking that. Only, the only way that we're able to obtain any data on that is if we have athletes who have been disciplined for possession or use of drugs on school property. Uh, and for the last school year, which is when I asked them, boy, there were two student athletes. So, that's, that's the only way we have to chip a pilot thing at this point on that. The second one was, what percentage of screens do you have to use, to do annually for an effective program? And I did talk with the company that we currently use for employee drug screens, uh, who is currently doing random screening for athletes in two systems in Tennessee, small systems. Uh, and his recommendation was that for a good program, you would do about ten percent annually. And the systems that he's doing, like I said, are small systems within Tennessee. At this point, uh, only about four hundred, four hundred and fifty students, and they do all athletes one time per year, and then about ten percent randomly thereafter.
You had cost of that, basically, before I?
And they are, and they are screening just currently for the five-panel screen, uh, which is, uh, forty-eight fifty for the five-panel screen, per screen. And then it's an additional hundred and twenty to a hundred and forty dollars per screen if you test for cigarette use.
That's per individual?
Per student.
First, for clarification, uh, you got here a student athlete. I thought the last discussion included other deliveries other than athlete. I, I thought the agreement that, uh, the policy statement, uh, included all extracurricular.
We are permitted to screen for all extracurricular activities, but the questions that arose from that were maybe more related to athletes specifically.
So, we, we had, uh, it brought up two meetings ago, is that right? No, I was talking to Ms. McLeod, uh, where it all arrived, derived from. Uh, to, to initially look into this, this whole thing on. It involves athletics.
Okay, so then, uh, I, I won't, this is my sacrament.
Correct, correct. It was before that, correct, yeah.
It was last, actually, towards the end of last year, I think.
That's how, yeah, that's how it actually got.
The question came up about, uh, cost effectiveness, and I was saying that all the different, all the different, you're talking about screening, everything, you're talking about. How many athletes do we have? How many athletes in?
That's what I was thinking. The number is, if there's only two that have been caught, it means you've got everybody, but certainly the number is extremely small. Were they, in fact, that's one of the great things about athletics because most of the people that go out and participate in athletic team know that they're being watched, especially the coaches and all, and they're not going to jeopardize their ability to play in a tournament or something. I mean, it's, it's a good thing. That's why athletics is good.
And we reported before that, you know, there were several systems in Tennessee that were doing it initially when the law was changed, uh, and they were primarily using saved schools money.
That's gone.
And that's gone. So, most of those programs have been phased out since, since we no longer get that funding. And the systems in Tennessee that are still doing it are very, very small.
Be pretty costly for us to even attempt to.
It would be very costly for us. It would also be, uh, difficult to manage. I mean, you're looking at, you know, some, someone visiting multiple schools. Each time they come to do screens, uh, someone at the school level would have to keep track of who was on that list for random screens, when the screens came in, what you do with the information. So, it would be difficult to manage as well.
Anybody else?
It's a lot cheaper when we walk the dogs through the parking lots and just go to do it because they do, they've got pretty good noses, and, uh, they come up with it, you know?
All right, uh, Ms. McLeod, I guess you're going to set something up probably for May?
Yes, sir.
Next meeting? You'll notify everybody a month in advance, something like that, so. If there's nothing else further, we're adjourned.